The time is 6 o'clock PM. I would like to welcome everyone and call the order of Lebanon City Schools Board of Education regular meeting for February the 18th, 2025. If everyone can join me in the pledge, please.
Here it is.
This is right here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Irvin, roll, please.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Here.
Mrs. Cope?
Here.
Mrs. Dalton?
Here.
Mr. Gliotti?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Item number four, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on the agenda from February the 18th, 2025, regular meeting? Ms. Irvin?
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item five, communications reports. A is hearing of the public. Seeing that there are none, we will move on to item B, student board member update. Mr. Parlet.
So, Mr. Parlet, you can't put the pictures on the screen today. Do you have, what do you have written down?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll share these with the board members afterwards, if that's okay.
They're in our packet, too.
They are?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we didn't update what Mrs. Dalton has for her next. We, I didn't put it in your packet, because it, so I, well, I'll try to figure it out by then. Go ahead.
BPA rocks regionals. WCCC Lebanon Business Academy students competed at the Region 17 Business Professionals of America competition. Over 400 registered members across southwest Ohio competed in the competition. Congratulations to the following students that placed in the top six in their event. Nate Corahair, Eva Sloan, J.J. Lewis, Lena Eggers, Luke Morris, Malin Matheny, Aiden Ford, Alyssa Wellinghoff, Noah Seller, Avery Givens, and Ally Smith on their state qualifying finish. They will be competing at the state competition in Columbus on March 10th to the 11th. Lebanon musicians represent a local honor band. We had four musicians represent Lebanon High School during the local honor band. Quite the honor after auditioning against local schools in District 13. The students were Will Taylor and the Jazz Band, Ethan Kuhn, Dalton Freiberger, and Brooke Crockett. MLK commemoration program. Junior Caitlin Berger was honored with the Youth Leader of Tomorrow Drum Major Award at Lebanon's 40th Annual MLK Commemoration Program. She was recognized for her advocacy for students with disabilities and mental health needs. Caitlin is a member of the Hope Squad. Berger is working with Key Club to plan a dress drive for students who can't afford dresses for prom, homecoming, daylight prom students for, or with multiple disabilities. Our NHS blood drive was a huge success. The contribution to the NHS blood drive on Friday, January 31st, was amazing. This was tied for the largest blood drive we've hosted since 2010. 122 people registered to give blood. 95 were successful. This was 119% of the goal. We had 49 first-time donors, and over 285 lives will be positively impacted because of total donations. And then we had PIA Staff Member Day. This was the freshman class fundraiser. The class of 2028 sold over 150 tickets. Special thanks to Sean Lamb, Heidi Calvert, Officer Tim Cooper, Kalen King, Nathan Chivington, Cam Hour, Grant Gardner, and Alyssa Hensy for being good sports for a good cause. Shout out to Tessa Molina and the freshman class leaders for making lunch last Friday a memorable experience. Congratulations to the following students who were represented at the LHS Choirs at OMEA District Honor Choir and OMEA Solo and Ensemble. Honored Choir members were Natalie Plaisa, Nathan Appleby, Lucy Cube, and Emily Jones. All three solo and ensemble participants received superior reviews. There Sophie McVale, she won for vocal solo and piano solo, Jasmine Beach for piano solo, and Katie King for vocal solo. And that's the rest of the, I don't have the upcoming events, there weren't very many, so.
The only thing you had listed on here was the SAT prep seminar was, is this coming Saturday, or this coming Friday. So, just as a point to the board, typically in the past, we have offered the ACT in our, at the high school. So, Ohio law changed, and we were required to offer the ACT or SAT to all students in one time during high school, and it's paid for by the school district and the state funding for that. The last several years, we've had issues with the ACT. If you guys remember, last year, we had a day scheduled, and then the ACT didn't give us our test materials on time, and so we had to shuffle, like, oh, now we're going to go to school that day, and change things around. The ACT has gotten more difficult to deal with. It's the College Board Company. So, we made a decision as a district to switch to the SAT instead of the ACT. So, the district is offering the SAT now, going forward to all students. They still have the ability to take the ACT. We still are a testing site for that, but what is paid for by the district and the state is now going forward, going to be the SAT. Didn't see any issues with Ohio schools. They would accept either one, and so that's something that is just a change for us this year and going forward. So, thanks, Isaac. Sorry I couldn't get it to work today. Apparently, there's an update either on my computer or on the screens that are preventing that from happening, so, apologize.
Thank you, Isaac. Moving on to item C, board committee reports. Student achievement liaison, Ms. Dalton?
Okay. Do you think, is it working?
Doesn't work for me either.
Okay. All right, well, I'll just kind of talk through everything.
Do you need, do you have a copy of your presentation?
I do, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so, just things that were going on in the month of January and February in Lebanon schools. Last Friday, the 14th, we conducted a dyslexia simulation workshop, which was a professional development day for the staff, but we invited families to come in and listen to that, which I think was a great thing, because there's so much to be learned about dyslexia, and to offer that to the families. I hope we continue to do that in the future, and hopefully, we got some good feedback from that program. There were two sessions that took place there. And the next slide, which you don't see, but is just the Lebanon Junior High Students of the Month, and they are kind of following our mission of being reflective, respectful, and responsible, which is up on our board over there. So, we'd like to honor them. The other thing that was happening at Bowman, which I think might be coming from that seminar of the anxious generation. They are running a tech-free initiative at Bowman Primary. And so what it is, is just educating the students at a young age to look for alternatives other than kind of playing on a phone or an iPad, and they create ideas along with their parents, and then they bring those ideas back to school and share them, and then the best ideas are awarded. Countryside YMCA provided some day passes for students, and we're just trying to create some excitement around different ways to spend time tech-free, so.
Yep, it's been a really good thing. Bowman staff has really got on board with this. There's over 40 staff members participating in a book study. It actually just wrapped up of the anxious generation, and one of the things they thought as they were reading the book was, how can this school support this? And so some of the staff members came up with this tech-free initiative idea, and kids are basically signing a contract for that day, or, I'm not going to use any devices. Then they come back and they write, the next day, they're turning in their contract and their slip, and parents sign off on it, and they've asked them, like, what are the things that you've been doing instead of being on a device? And they, they've really loved seeing those responses, and it's, the picture that you have here is about 20 kids. And so it's been different kids every time, it's been a different group of people, and it's something that, in the discussion last week with staff, I went to the book study last week on Wednesday, and they were trying to find ways, even at Bowman, or what are ideas, other ideas that we can publicize and put out that will help encourage families to spend time together and not on devices. And so, I think it's a great way for us to partner with families, and these kids look really excited about not being on a device in this photo. I mean, it's something that they're getting some good things out of, so, thanks for highlighting that.
I think those are the, two of the last things that I discussed were, that were really involving the families and in with the student education. So, I think that those are really a good thing, that we can work with families on that. And then, I thought there was a really good program that Berry and Bowman students did together, because I think that it takes an assignment, which the sixth graders had an assignment to create a narrative book and with illustrations. So, instead of just doing it and turning it into a teacher, they actually developed their own book, drew their own pictures, and then gave them to first graders over at Bowman to read. And so, they could see their work, you know, coming, you know, getting used in some way instead of just getting a grade. So, that was just two teachers that collaborated together for a program for both sixth graders and kindergartners, and I think that they both enjoyed that. Then the next page, which you don't see, but Mr. Severs went into the kindergarten class as a mystery reader, which is always fun for him to, you know, get in touch with what goes on with the classroom, and I'm sure that was a big hit.
I read a great book that day. There was an old lady who swallowed a rose, and it was all about Happy Valentine's Day, but it was, forgot about all the cool stuff that little kids' books have in them, so. And I got a lot of great questions. I don't know if you guys saw this today or not, but our United States House of Representative member, Greg Landsman, was at Bowman today, reading books to kids as well. And so, the more that we can get legislators and people in seeing what's going on in our schools is a great thing as well. So, it's a big, was a big, exciting day for that classroom today as well. It's probably not the most famous celebrity reader in the last month, so I have to tune up my game, maybe.
You're number one. He's number two.
No, I, I think he may have passed me up on this, so.
Well, concerning the anxious generation, and anybody that's watching the board meeting that has kids, I'm reading it, and I'm doing the book study with Mr. Severs, so I go to both of them, and the stuff I'm learning is frightening about how bad phones are for little kids. Not just that they stay in the house too much, but it really rewires their brain in a bad way, and I think it would be cool if we did like a, I think they call them the TED Talk, but, you know, if we just sat down and discussed the key points in the book and put it on the school's webpage, because we're not getting a lot of parents coming. You know, we get eight or 10, which is good, but we, you know, it'd be nice if we had 5,000 parents doing it, so.
Yeah, that would be a good idea, or at least kind of the key points of it.
Yep, and one of the things I've talked to our staff members that are doing is about that exact thing. How do we recap sort of the end of this? What are the, what are the key takeaways, and maybe some commitments we can have as a district that parents can sign up for? So, I'll, I'll take a look at that, Mr. McCutcheon. So, sorry you had one more slide there, I think.
That's okay. Last slide is, we passed the 100-day mark, and the kindergartners have a good time with that, and they do everything in hundreds, including they invited parents or guardians in to spend a few hours, or just kind of getting a tour of their kindergarten class. So, again, we are really working hard to work with parents to provide the best education for the kids.
Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Dalton.
Sure.
Item B, CAT Committee Report, Mr. Gliotti?
We did not have a meeting this last month, and we will be following up with the Treasurer's Office to get our next meeting scheduled. If it's not already, has that been scheduled yet?
It will be November.
November.
Okay, gotcha.
Excellent.
Thank you.
C, Legislative Liaison, Ms. Cope?
Just a few updates. Some, there's a lot going on, a lot of things in committee, but there were a few that I felt were important, and just something to keep your eye on. Well, first of all, Governor DeWine tapped Jim Trussell as the Lieutenant Governor, which I think some people were unaware of. I realized, I didn't realize that, but talking to some people, they were unaware of that. So, the Senate Education Committee had its first hearing of Senate Bill 34. This bill would require public schools to select one of the bills listed historical documents, educational documents displayed in each classroom, and you would have until July of 2026 to do this. Of those documents, it's the Mayflower Compact, the Declaration of Independence, the Mottos of the United States and Ohio, the Ten Commandments, the Magna Carta, the Bill of Rights, the United States Constitution, or the Articles of Confederation. And you would pick, the school board would pick the historical documents that they would have put in there. They are allowing people to, to fund, you can have person, private donations to fund that, but that was in, first hearing occurred this week. Some other, just two other bills that I thought were interesting. House Bill 77 was just introduced. This would require the Department of Health to develop an informational, some informational material on type 1 diabetes for parents and guardians of elementary school students, so that they would do a widespread educational push for type 1 diabetes in elementary. And the last one that I thought was also one to keep our eye on is House Bill 88. It would require public schools to incorporate instruction on fentanyl awareness and abuse prevention for grades K through 12, and require boards of education to designate one week of the school year as fentanyl poisoning awareness week. So, these are all just some bills that are in committee or just being introduced. There's a whole bunch more, but as I read through them, I thought that those were ones that were pretty interesting, and I'll be interested to see where they go from here.
Thank you, Mrs. Cope. And the last one, D, Warren County Career Center, Mr. Lane?
Our February meeting is not until Thursday of this week, so no update.
No update, okay. Moving on, I'm gonna need a motion for item number six, approval of the minutes and signing of our last special meeting, which was held February 10th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions about the minutes? Ms. Irvin?
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item seven, financial. I need a motion to approve items A through F, please.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Irvin, you have the floor.
Okay, this will be very quick. Okay, so, we are at the end of January in our financial reports. We are still working on the November, I'm sorry, the next CAT Committee meeting will be in May, not November. We are still working on the November forecast. As of, I'll do this, because we don't have the screen, so I'll, I won't go over the graph, but we're currently at 71 days operating cash. Our target is 120. We think we'll land at 113. If you remember from last month, we typically, at this point in time, are waiting for our second half property taxes to hit, and so our cash balance starts to trend downward. We're right where we expected to be, and actually, I just got an email this week that we're getting the property tax advances. So, we're starting to upward trend again, so that will be great, but we are right where we expected to be. Seven months in, we should be around 58%. Right now, our revenues are sitting at 50% as we wait for the property tax, variance around 1% for the year, and then expenses, we're sitting at 57%. So, we're 1% below where a seven-month target would be. Variance there is about 2.5%, so doing pretty good as far as month-end. That's it.
That's it? All right, so that was A. And B, C is a list of amended appropriations. D, amended certificate of estimate resources. E is a very long list of donations that we are very thankful for. I would like to point out, too, Justin Perry, over $13,000 of work he did at Vandergriff Stadium. And I think Justin was a 1998 graduate of Lebanon?
Somewhere in that range.
Somewhere in that area. And then Todd Carter from Lebanon Electric Supply, he was a 1985 graduate and my quarterback in high school. His donation was over $24,000 to get that facility up and running, and I believe Justin was working right up until.
He was there, he was there the night of the first game to make sure the lights turned on.
They were on, yeah. We just ran him out, because he was still sweaty out on the field. You guys remember that? He was still working. But what a huge list of amazing community leaders that this is, and also Mike Lane is on the list. And then, F is a then and now. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Irvin?
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to item eight, it's a public records request. There was two of them, and they're in your packet. Item nine, I'll need a motion to go through other educational items, A through F, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, these are consent items. I will read each and every one of them. Item A, approve the adoption of fish tank plus English Language Arts curriculum. Mr. Severs, jump in here anytime to explain.
I'll come back to those first two items.
The first two?
Yep.
Approve the adoption of the EL Education English Language Arts Curriculum. Approve paper testing for Ohio State Test Grade 3 English, English, English Language Arts. We have three overnight state student trips, the high school football team, our show choir next month, and our marching band in the fall. Approve the resolution authorizing membership in the 2025-2026 Ohio High School Athletic F is approve the revision of the 2025-2026 school year calendar.
Okay, so I have some things to talk about here on the list. I'll, I'll talk about two things quickly that don't need much explanation, and then we'll go backwards. So, F, so we have a calendar committee that meets, and we meet for months, and we give options out to the committee, and we review the options, we narrow it down a little bit, and then we send it out to all of our staff for votes, and they can see all the numbers and everything that are on there. Well, last month, our EMUS coordinator was getting ready to put in next school year's calendar into the EMUS calendar, which is basically the connection between the Treasurer's Office and how we get funding to the state of Ohio. And as she's putting things into the calendar, realized that we did not have enough school days in next year's calendar, based off the calendar that was approved. There were some typos in the calendar when we calculated the numbers out to the side, and we were inadvertently counting days that were off over spring break as in attendance days. Nobody caught it on the committee, nobody caught it, went to the buildings for their vote, nobody who looked at it in any of our times saw the discrepancy. So, I went back and looked at options and the survey results from staff members, and one of the things that was very clear when we had the surveys from staff members last, last year when we voted on this, was that there was a desire to start school a little bit later than what, than the trend had been moving earlier in August. And so there was really only one way to fix the calendar besides starting earlier in August, because we didn't have a whole lot of breaks throughout the year scheduled in that calendar year, which was to add those, we were four days short, was to add those four days after Memorial Day, like we are this year. So, go home for the weekend Memorial Day, you have Monday off, and then we would have students on school Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, staff on Friday. We would be done before June. And so, instead of putting some earlier in August and some after Memorial Day, and then running into whether students and staff would show up for one day after Memorial Day, the revision that you have is four days after, after Memorial Day. That's the only change on the calendar. It is not at all, what I'd like to do is to say, hey, we messed up, and less than, you know, we're starting school in six months, we have to review this calendar, but I think it's the best solution that we have to the problem that we did not see at the time. I will take responsibility, because I'm the person that makes the spreadsheets and the charts and the calendars, but I will also say that nobody caught it either, so I don't know how it happened. So, I'm responsible, but nobody, my checks and balances didn't keep me in line either. So, C, we've been doing this for the last couple of years, we just had to have the board approve it every year, to give the third-grade test as a paper pencil test instead of a computer test. I think it's been one of the reasons why our third-grade scores have improved, because we're actually testing their ability to read instead of their ability to use a computer. So, we would like to keep using paper pencil tests in third grade. A and B, before I talk any, because I can go as in-depth on A and B as I need to go, do we have any questions about those two school, those two items before I address that? Hearing none. Just the, the information to share with you, and I can provide more specific details if you need them. Department of Education, Ohio state law says we have to choose English Language Arts curriculum from an approved list of state vendors. So, the state has given us approved list of vendors. We have gone through a process. We adopted a program for foundational skills, so thinking about phonetics, right, word sounds, all the different things that are foundational reading skills. We use a program called Fundations, and it's on the list, we're good with that. The other thing that you have to have is basically the curriculum for what books and what reading units and things are you going to do besides foundational skills, what are the list of materials that you're going to have that also needs to come from the approved list? We went to a vendor fair by we, the curriculum director, and a group of teachers last year, and administrators went to a vendor fair. We saw all of these companies present that were on a list of approved vendors. This year, we've been doing, they, each team looked at a bunch of those products, and then they piloted two different programs. In kindergarten through second grade, they piloted two programs, and in third grade through sixth grade, they piloted two programs, and they've been looking at the student results, staff use, all those things, and these were the companies, these were the programs that they recommended. What you are actually approving is a list of actual books that will be provided for every classroom, and they come along with teaching units and things with them, they're in units. The team was very, very conscientious of the units and the books that were chosen. Not all of these companies, think about tech companies are providing, and textbook companies are providing materials for everybody. Our staff and our administration worked really hard to make sure that what was approved would be appropriate for the grade level, meet the state standards, and appropriate for the community expectations and things like that that we have. So, if anybody has any specific questions about that, want to sit down and talk about it, but what we are saying to staff is, this is the approved list. There may be, if you go to the website, other things that are outside of this approved list, but this is Lebanon's list and what we would be providing for them. So, I feel really good about it. I've actually seen these programs and, and some of the demos, and I've been in here working on it. It puts us in a really good place, language arts instruction and reading foundational skills for us to have. It's been a long time since we've adopted language arts curriculum and reading curriculum for elementary. The other thing to know about this is the state of Ohio gave us $230,000 or something like that to adopt these curriculum materials, so most of this, if not all of this, is covered by state, state dollars, not local dollars, so. Okay?
And I, I will add that the board also approved the calendar, so I guess we're all, except the OG, you're innocent. But I, I think Mike, and Mike Lane and Kim Cope did bring up quite often that, and I hear it too, the feedback is, we start too early. You know, it's not so much about having to go a few days after Memorial Day, but, you know, that extra week in August means a lot, so. Any, any other comments or questions on items A through F? Ms. Irvin, roll, please.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Lane? Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Moving on to item 10, or number 10, A through P personnel, I would need a motion.
So moved?
Second.
I will go ahead and read them, it's quite a lot. A is a list of retirements. B is a list of resignations. C is employment pending acceptable BCI FBI background checks. D is substitute employment, just one person. D2 is substitute trainee bus drivers. And I see Ashley Rails on the list, so that's pretty good.
So one of the things I would say to the board, you've probably seen on Facebook advertised recently, we are in desperate need of bus drivers. We've had to make some modifications and we've had to cancel some routes recently and it's not what we want to do. One of the things that we are advertising to parents right now, specifically those of spring sports athletes, is we don't have enough bus drivers, our priority will always be to get kids home from school. Even if that means we have to cancel transportation to a sporting event or delay that event, our priority is going to be get kids home from school. So we're asking families, you know, if you have a desire to make sure your kid's event gets off on time and they get there, would you be interested in signing up to be a bus driver? And you can drive your kid to the event in the afternoon, get paid to drive the bus, get into the event for free, and then drive them home. If that sounds appealing to anybody, we've had some people sign up, the person that you name actually is on the list for that purpose. Right, and so we've had some people that we've talked to about that. So I think it's, there, there's some people in the pipeline. It takes about four to six weeks from the time you start to the time you finish in terms of being trained and being certified and able to be on a bus by yourself. We have also changed recently our, you know, we're paying for our, the training and a lot more of that tough stuff upfront, so there really is not much of an upfront cost if you want to be, if you're willing to be a bus driver and to help out the district. We're still looking for some people for that, so.
So how many of these people are, are, are any of these people actual bus route drivers?
I think that there, this group of people have all signed up to be a bus driver, except for Ashley Rail who already works for us in a different capacity and she's going to be the sub as needed for sports trips, I think is what she's interested in doing.
So given the resignation, this is a net gain of four because we had one bus driver resign, I think I saw.
We, we, yes, and some of these people-
Four to six weeks.
Some of these people are closer to being done than others, they maybe have started the process or things like that, so. It's still, it's, it's not a problem that's getting, we had some of people that we approved in January because they applied, you know, to be a bus driver and when they got the message in December. So I, we're working that direction towards getting more bus drivers. So that's, that's what we're doing, so.
Do the smaller teams have access to a van and is it easier to get?
Yeah, we were going to look at all those options and getting driver, coaches certified to drive vans and things like that. Ohio law allows a van to be one driver and eight participants. So eight students in a van, one driver, for a total of nine. All of our vans can't have any more than nine seats in them, they make them that way on purpose. So it limits what you can do. So I mean tennis would be the only logical thing, but our tennis teams are larger than eight participants. We would likely need to take multiple vans if we're going to do tennis. We've talked about possibly doing like field events for some of the track meets or something that they can get out sooner. So the shot put and discus people go early or the, you know, whatever. But that's, the problem is almost all of our teams are bigger than eight.
So let me ask a question, this, this may be an ignorant question, I'm going to ask it anyway. Because, but there is a, on the, I think it's called the alternate, alternate transportation or something where the parents allowed to drive their own child home. And actually there is a two option on there as well. So have we even thrown it out there that said, hey, freshman baseball, if your parents want to drive, everybody individually, is that an option?
We would need, we discussed this last week with the transportation office staff and Mr. Pantley and Mr. Butler and I, and I think we need to make sure that our board policy, what's the policy that we have for self-transport? So, I mean, it's always legal for a parent to transport themselves. We don't allow currently students to transport themselves to events because if we're going on behalf of a team, the liability is still on us. But I think there's some things that we can look at in our board policy to make sure that, you know, self-transport would be an option or parent transport. I think it comes down to, we can't get to Kings today for the game, but parents, if you can get your kids there, my guess is, is that we'll get a baseball team to Kings to play the game on time.
But it's only their own child. Their own child. Or you get down enough to where the van can hold the rest.
Supposed to be only your own child or get down, and get down enough to where the van can help hold the rest. So I think we're going to, we're going to piecemeal some things together, we're going to have to. The other thing, just to point out, like, there are teams in our conference, specifically Walnut Hills, they don't transport to away basketball games. Kids were showing up this year to away basketball games. Like, they drove themselves from Cincinnati to Lebanon, multiple kids in a car. So there's a lot of self-transport from other schools, we're not the only ones in this situation. It's not ideal, right? We don't want that to be the case because we believe the safest place for kids to be is on a yellow school bus. Like, research is very clear, the school buses are safer than cars. And so that is, that is part of, you know, our, our decision-making process right now. It's going to have to be, what is the board policy on those things? So I, I will-
One, one thing I like to call out here too, because I, I've seen some, at least one, if not multiple, comments on Facebook about, well, we passed a levy, so this wouldn't be a problem. This is not about money, this is about personnel to fill the seats and then the bus drivers.
Our bus drivers are paid as well or better than every other bus driver in Warren County. So it's not about what we're paying our bus drivers.
Or that we don't have the money to pay them.
Or that we don't have the money to pay them. There's, this is not, this is not a ploy to get more money or to, you know, to do those things. This is, this is really about, is a nationwide crisis, it's not just us, it's not just Ohio.
What's the average age of a bus driver today?
Our average age of a bus driver is in the 60s. If you take the five-year demographic from like, let's say, 40 to 44, 45 to 49, you think about five-year chunks. Our largest five-year chunk that we have with 13 drivers in it is between the age of 65 and 69. The next two closest age brackets are in 60 to 64 and 70 to 74, actually. Our, our bus driving, bus drivers fleet is an aging population and that's really what's happening across the board everywhere. Is that it used to be a job that people could do and it provided flexibility and they were doubling up with other things or it was something like that. So my previous district, a lot of farmers did it. And they would take time off to harvest or plant and then they didn't have anything else to do, you know, during those periods of time. And so we had a, we had a farming population of people that did it. So it, it, it provided a little bit of, the demographics have changed on work, right? I mean, you can go get a job at a fast food restaurant now for, for decent money because of, we're all competing for a workforce. And so it's hard to drive a bus. Like, I think about the fact that I'd be driving, facing the road and worried about all the things that I'm normally worried about on a road while having 70 kids behind me on a bus. Like, it's, it's a tough job. They do great job, it's, but it's a tough job and I think what we're just seeing is like a workforce across the board that says like, that's hard, right? That's, there's a lot of pressure, there's a lot of things with that. So one of the things you'll notice maybe in the flyers that we put out to try to turn this back around to something positive here is like, we have bus drivers who do a great job and they love their job. So one of the quotes we had and we're trying to have bus drivers tell their own story and be their own marketing team, whether it's on social media, whether it's, so one of the flyers we put out recently, we quoted a bus driver that was just talking about the satisfaction, the joy that she gets in the job and seeing kids and, and being a part of the culture in a school system. So again, if anybody's interested, if you're interested, I can only drive in the morning. We'll take people that can only drive in the morning. Or I can only drive in the afternoon, we can take that. Where before we said like, no, we don't want to split routes up. You know, now it's, we're willing to put some, some pieces together, so.
Yeah, and we have a great transportation department and we have got great bus drivers.
Yep.
My bus driver was Mrs. Lamb and she drove me from second grade until I was a freshman.
Same bus driver?
Same bus driver.
Which one of your freshman years was that?
My, my, my red-shirted freshman year. And when she would come to, to my business, she would always find me, she'd always give me a hug. And, you know, she was like one of the people, if I have to list the five people that I just adored while I was in school, I could only think of three, but, but she was one of them. So it's a great, and it's a great department. E is a list of change of status. F is some supplementals pending FBI background. G is a board resolution for the employment of non-licensed coaches. H is a supplemental for volunteer coaches pending FBI background checks. I is a very long list of volunteers pending their background checks. J is one stipend. K is cooperating teacher stipend. So that, and that is a student teacher, is that right, Mr. Severs?
Yeah, so that situation actually is a, a school, a school psychologist, but the University of Dayton is where the student is coming from and the rates basically to pass through, University of Dayton gives us money, we give it to the staff member and they take all of the necessary things out of it that are supposed to be there. But we have staff members that consistently are willing to help grow the profession and this is a good, good example of that with Mrs. East up there at the high school.
L is a few leave of absences. M is our Saturday school monitor. N is a student intern and I'm assuming that Mason is working at the bus garage?
Yeah, so Mason, this is a really cool opportunity for us. Mason is a student at Warren County Career Center and a lot of the students at the Career Center get internships their senior years at local businesses. We had the idea, knowing that was a possibility, there are students in the mechanic program at the Career Center that are going to different car lots and places here in town and getting experience. We reached out to them and said, we'd be interested in having a mechanic intern. It's hard to find them, we had two openings this year and it took us a while to find those two people. So they sat down with us and they're like, we've never even thought about putting an intern at a school. And this is great. And so we're taking one, where I think we're the first one to do something like this. They are paid internships, the kid will be working, he'll be learning on the job, they'll be doing work. And so it's, we had to come up with a rate that was not like a substitute rate, but basically what was, what were they making out in the field elsewhere? And we'll see how it goes. We've already discussed that maybe in the future that we look at an HVAC intern or something in other departments that they have, where we can give them real life experience in the buildings, but also help train maybe somebody that is a future worker, worker for us. So Mason is actually one of our students that's at the Career Center, I think, which is a cool thing as well, so.
Good program.
It's awesome, I'm really looking forward to it. The bus garage, the mechanics, we're really, really excited about it. Like, they, they were super excited about the opportunity, so.
O is three tutors and F is game day workers. Any comments or questions about that long list?
I have one comment about that, if you go all the way back to the beginning, we have, we have four retirements, several of those are classified personnel with Rodney and Tammy. But also we have two teachers, they're listed. Just, you guys have probably seen job postings coming out. We are, at this point in time, I think, over 20 staff members already that we are looking for teachers and staff members for next year already. So we are, they are busy interviewing folks, it's really pretty early. But multiple positions are intervention specialists, which are hard to find. You know, science teachers, math teachers. So the things that are very, that we're going to be, need to be competitive with other people, we're out in front of right now. And so I think, last time I checked, we were at around like, almost 20 retirements announced already and we think there's possibly some more happening. So it'll be a big turnover with staff. There was a change recently that happened with STRS where you had to work one less year in order to get full retirement. So that's changed some things for some people that now we may see even some more people do that. I, I think we're looking at in the next several years, a significant amount of turnover in, in retirements, not resignations, but retirements from an aging staff population. Which is, which is challenging. Financially is, could be significant for the district as well with hiring newer staff members coming in much less than the retiring ones. So we'll continue to give you guys an update as we get through that process.
I think you mentioned to me in a conversation that we had that same issue coming up in, in the administration ranks as well, right?
Yes, it is, and looking at the, and the, looking at the population, like the, the same, you know, aging of that, there will be a lot of eligible administrators that are eligible for retirement within the next three years, like, close to 10 in different, different fields, different buildings, different departments that are eligible. Doesn't mean they can go, but one of the things I'm beginning to work on right now is having personal conversations with all the administrators and knowing, getting an idea what those plans are so we can build sort of succession planning or have an understanding. Probably would like to talk to the board in March about what some of those plans may be and just get some, some feedback from you on some items, so. But it's, it's significant enough that I think we need to be proactive in the next two years and coming up with some transition plans for things.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Severs.
Ms. Irvin, roll please.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. And our last item is board comments and I think we will start from the right and work across to our left. Mr. Lane, comments?
From the camera view, right on camera.
I was like-
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I don't think I have anything else today.
Ms. Dalton?
No, I think-
Good?
Yeah, good.
Nothing to add except I really love the Career Center participation with our, our mechanic staff, that's great.
Nothing to add?
I, I do have something to add, that the Lebanon Athletic Booster Gala tickets are now on sale to the public, which will be March the 15th at the Great Wolf Lodge and they raise a lot of money to pay for trips like what the football team is going to and the, the basketball team when they go to the Christmas trip. The band is having a mattress sale, I think it's this Saturday, is that correct? And the other thing I wanted to mention, we already discussed a little bit, is the book, The Anxious Generation. And I would strongly recommend that to any parent or grandparent to, to read that book. Item number 12, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Irvin?
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Excellent.